Okay, good morning sa tanan. Since 9:30 na, pwedeng tamusugod sa tuhang MRP. Dunatay module, dihao sa may table and also our attendance. Pedy tamu ko ha sa tong module, aga attendance. Okay, welcome to our MRP. Oh, we would like to welcome ma'am Sally Law, gakaron kauban ato, no, ato ang dating ah, MSWDO. Welcome, ma'am. Haha, ripai minga, kita kanamo. Sige, let us start with a word of prayer. Let's pray. Every day of our lives, you have sustained us by your grace. And we have come this far over our lives because of your divine providence. We thank you for another opportunity you have given to us, where we could gather together, learn together, a lesson that would continue to benefit... Ngayon pa ni Ishya Gopta, "You need a strong family because at the end, they will love you and support you unconditionally." Agree ba tadi ha? Tama no? You know, dunay, dunay kining kuwan, kining... Worker niato dire, dire sa LGO. Kailaman mo, pero adela na ko isulti. For how many, sixteen years nga nagbulag si Ambana. Karoning uli, masakit on kayo. So siya, nagrelease at pasaylo, pula siksa Ginoo, pero ingon na yanga, kuwan pastor, kung love pastor, wala namagun pastor, wala nagun, okay. Siyempre no? Gibiyaan siya, nga ang iyahang pagstragol sa pagbiya sa iyahang perteng grabe, grabe niyang stragol. Niya karoon, nakarecover na siya, nakakuwan siya, no, na maayaw, napaliya kinabuhay, ning balik karoon yala. So, listen kayo. Pa niya, so monay, mona no, ang ginatawag nga, ah, kahimtang, ngaunta ato ang higugmaon, ang ato ang pamilya, member sa pamilya tungod kay sa katapusan, no, kesa may muhatag o unconditional nga support. Ikaw magkasakit ka, ang imo ang mga barkada mo, oi mo, ati manimo, ayos, layo rastinoon, ang imo ang pamilya, diba? Okay, ambot kiunsa na pag kwinta sa uban nga, kapos sila ubias ng pamilya, kuya mo laroy-laroy, niya pagbalik, magpati manah, diba? So, we have to love our family, make it our family, a very strong family, because at the end, kesa may magsuportahay, diba ang pamilyara? Monay, essence a home, panimalay, no, ang gidesain sa Ginoo. This morning, let us talk about emotional health. Okay, isa sa nakong problema, stibo kalibutan karoon, ang ginatawag ng mental health, diba? So, kung nagkaroon ng mga ginatawag ang mga mental sickness ang mga kabataan, because asa malag sugod, yaas panimalay tungod sa mga insecurities nga, ah, nabuo, tungod kay, ah, dunay mga, at kung gina hisgutang tumiyagi, kining mga hurt feelings, no, kining hurts mang God. Hurts are real experience in the family. Pero dili na siya madilga ni, then, mag inawayay kanunay, mawala na madisvalue ang essence sa family. May ingon ang uban nga, ay pag dito nalang kosong barkada, it is bling away, klaro din ni, no, may pali kosong barkada, so monay mahitabo, diba? So dili unta na, siya dapat. Okay, there are some contributing factors in order to have an emotional health. No, kanang healthy nga emotion. Number one, kining taong secured attachment, secured attachment. It's about the parents' love and care for their children or their child from womb until birth. But iba sa but, makaiksunan nga, ikaw babae, ikaw inahan, pagbuntis palang nimo, paghebelong abuntis ka, istryahan na daan imong anak, na napasatian. No, kang isa, kita sa tuhang pagka-human, ang grabe nga factor na'to, no, we are psychological being. Grabe kayo, o factor ang ato ang subconscious, o sa atong consciousness. So sa atong subconscious palang daan, ginafeel na ang, ginafeel na sa bata, nga gilaob siya. nga importante siya, paggawas niya, maayaw kayo ang emotion sa bata. So, ingon na ang ginatawag nga, ah, ginatawag nga, dapat himoon. Subconscious palang, no, imong anak, istryahan mo na, love ka'y ka ni Papa, love ka'y ka ni Mama, no, love ka ni Jesus, love ka sa Ginoo, no, imo siyang istryang daan, imo siyang ikuwan, ba introduce na daan sa Ginoo. Ngano man, mainkalkit na sa iyahang subconscious, paggawas niya, sa iyang consciousness na, pag introduce Ginoo, wala na si struggle kayo ngano man. Na inutong nga, marong natungog ko naman ni, marong natungog ko naman ni, subconscious palang daan. Ambot sa tuhang, ah, sir, sa tuhang mga isa, ah, mga kaiksunan nga mga Muslim, dun na maguken na lungog, sakuan sa isa sa among mga preacher, dito sa MSYO. Nying lungog ni yanga, uga ako, naku tala ko, kamam parida. Kanang, oh, na ay mga anak nga babae, ang, sa ni Imam or Ustad, sagon kay paggawas, something nga isul- yes, kuya isay isulti is no other God except Allah. Kasi may pulos na nga bata, kaba, kadungog na, di siya kadungog, pero si pwet niya, ang subconscious. Subconscious niya, ah, ah, dun na dekuay Creator, dun na de naghimans, kadi dili na yung akong ultimate Creator, akong Papa o Mama, ang Ginoo di ay... Subconscious. Okay, niya pagkatao sa bata, no, dun na po'y isa kaprecher nag-ingon. Ang bata makakita siya, kanang bagong tao, makakita siya, pero, murao, kinipit ang pagpasuso sa mama. Ang mama, gaga, kanman, ikaw mama, kaga pasuso, kasi mong anak istryaha, kanan na, hagoa-guaas siya, kay kakita na siya nimo, ya, ang iyang vision mora nakataas, gikan din na siyo pagogo si iyang mata. So, kung imo siyang kinaisturya, nga nafeel sa bata nga, ah, wanted, akanang kuwan ba, sakay bitong love ka'ys siya, dili si unwanted. Ang secure ang emotion sa bata, grabe ka stable. Nakuk siya, diba? So monay ginatawag nga secured attachment. Letter A, from subconsciousness to consciousness, the love of the parents should already be felt by the child even still in the womb. Okay, the result, the infant, the infant while growing is secured in the presence of his or her parents. So monako ang bata nga secure ang iyahang feeling, no, wala si giba'ti nga unsa, un diha, insecurities, no, dili secure kayo ang iyahang feeling. O, massecure iyang feeling sa presence iyang parents, diha niya mafill unsa kaimportante ang home or ang family or ang panimalay. Okay, letter B, from formative years to adolescence. Formative years, what's na formative years, zero to ten siguro no, or seven, diha siya, formative years na siya. During infancy, a child feels the caring touch of the parents. No, caring touch, imo siyang ihag, imo siyang i-kiss, kanan diha, no, kanang caring touch na, kimoona ang isa sa mga makapasicare sa bata. No, kanay, ginatawag, kinesthetic area, no touch, sense of touch. This results to emotional bonding both the parents and the child. It is the essence of a home. Okay, formative years, diha sa formative years, zero to seven siguro, ah, formative years, ginhahalagang nga ang una nga ma, ang una niya, ang, ang butla nga ma, unang mainkalkit sa iyang subconscious, no, kanan nga, matuig, wale lain ang Ginoo, ang Diyos. Ang Ginoo mahigugmaon, maunis siya tanan, siya ang nagplanos ng kinabuhay, mas, ma, masulti sa iyahang during that formative years. Kay kung magdako na siya, bisan, muag siya o wiwardness kay ang tao curios mang God, mutisting mang God, mato mga wiwardness sa kinabuhay, pero bubalik yun ay sa Ginoo kayo ngano man, ang nakatanom sa iyahang mind, during formative years, mautoy mo privilege gayon. Okay. And then, second, positive experiences. While growing up from childhood to adolescence, a child must receive positive words from the parents like words of una affirmation and appreciation. The important ni siya, kung dunay anak, kung imong anak naghimo o sa kabutang, nga maayaw siya, maiba mo drawing or maiba mo kanta, i-affirm siya, nak, maayaw ka adiha, maay kali na, so ipanayo na, no, i-supportahan ta ka, ipanayo na siya. Okay, so ma experience sa bata ang ginatawag na mga positive na mga words nga na sa iyahang, maka-build up sa iyahang, ginatawag na self-esteem. Support your child whatever potentials ah, you have discovered in him. Okay, letter B, avoid any negative and degrading words. Okay, ngano man, this stabilizes a child's confidence and obscure his or her perspective or outlook in life. Kanabi tong, mga parents bitaw sa una no, sa tinoon lang, kanabi tong, sabry, wala pa may mga child psychology god sa una. Masoko gani, bugo ka. Adi, mainkalkit subas bata nga, bugo, day, kung magitoy pulos ko nga pagka-bata, diba? So, magdako siya, ah, murao, ah, sundan tanay, bugo bit ako, bit ako'y pulos, himoon tanay. Monay ma, tabos bata, diba? Kayo ngano man, ang iyahang mismo parents nagcondemn siya, diba? So, dili maayaw, so dapat affirmation, appreciation. Kung dun na may mga nahimo siya nga dautan, imohang i-review siya, ang kalong proper nga pamaaghi. No, dili lang kayo nagreview ka'to, sakuko, gago ka, bugo ka, ay, wala isay pulos, no, maka kuwan God sa bata, no, maka daot sa iyahang outlook sa kinabuhay. Third, proper validation and expression of emotion. If one family member had anger or frustration, it must be validated properly and be released or expressed. Sa, kasi problema na'to sa unang panahon, murad bawal sa tuwa sa una mga tarungan sa tuhang papag mama. Siya nagisturya, istryahan ka, motubag ka, bunalan ka, so di kakaexpress ibang emotion, diba? So dili maayaw. So dapat, aduna'y ginatawag nga, ah, chance, o tayng, mo explain ang bata o imo siyang paminawan, kay, ah, kuwan, no, kining, ah, dili ka ma one-sided. So kung dili ka ma one-sided, dili ka maka act of injustice to simong anak. O karoon, no, kayang, ang, ang kuwan, ang kining, ang kinipitong tao nga mga maritis nga mga tao, ang ilahang partner anak, kato mga one-sided po ng mga tao. Pag isturya niya, one-sided pati sa, ah, mao ba, ah, conclude na dyan siya, kuwan niya paminawa ang pika side, diba? Niya, oh, imong anak, gi, gi chismis dito, monay gimo, mao ba, gini anak, kapantalan ni unya, kuwan niyo pumuktala unsa na iinak, unsa gili tinoon. Luoy pa si mong anak, no, biklima si imohang pag ah, injustice. So dunay valid nga, ah, kuwan nga, ginatawag nga, pag expressa emotion. An, an unexpressed emotion can lead to suppression, which is in turn leads to depression. Wa, may maminaw sa kuwa, sok ano ko, musulti ko, ah, balon-baluna niya kasuko, yang kahiobos, no, moni-moni, yang kahiobos, balonon niya, dito, isulti niya sa, isulti niya sa iyahang barkada. Uga ang barkada po niya, ma opay giba'ti, ikasabang pos mama, ah, pareha sila, ayos kayo, monay at himoon. Haha, diba? Or, kanang, kanang imong anak, nganong palaaway dito sa kuwan, nganong palaaway dito sa school, ingon na mama, ngano sa imong anak, kapalaaway ma kayo, ay, tungod dun na problemas balay, no, kay na hurt dire. So, ingon pa ni John Maxwell, ah, hurting people hurt people. Kanang mga tao nga ga, ga, bro, kuya, kanagawid, tungod kay dunay problema gibiyaan din ni, no, lang ngay talag hasi dito sa kuwan, dos gawas, kay wala madilga. So sa case of, sa panimalay, kung dunay mga, mga emotion, bad emotion sa mga bata nga masupress, kay dili sila ka-express, imbis kay, monato ang chance nila, napaminawan sila, silang ginikanan, dili kay bawal, kasaban hinoon, so balon-balunin nila, mona nga, ah, muresulta sa ginatawag nga suppression and it will lead to depression. Thus, we must express our emotions properly. Last, emotional forgiveness. Each member of a family who had committed mistake must learn how to ask forgiveness not only in the mind but also in the heart and learn how to forgive oneself and other members. So ginatuluan ba ninyo 'yung mga anak-anak, mag-sorry ka, pag-sorry sa, pag-sorry kay mama, pag-sorry kay kuya, pag-sorry. Tuluan ko na tong anak, paano mag-sorry? Kay kung dili siya kabalo mo, ask ko forgiveness, mo sorry, then, di gina'm establish sa iyahang, diba? So kinahalagang nga kabalo siya mga ayaw o sorry. May itulo gayon na'to sa iyahang, kay para, ah, kuwan, kining, mag, magdako siya, mapractice niya, then, dili mo dagahan iyang kaaway. No, na'y mga bata nga dagahan na suko, no, kay di gumaig pasaylo, niya, siyempre. Pero kining mga bata ang maikay mo sorry, no, dagha maka-appreciate, na buta ni bata, no, kay kitang tanan, maka sipiyan mang gitah, no, pero ang ato ang, ah, weapon against po niya na is, sorry, sorry. Nindot kayo, diba? Sa, ako bitonggi, na learn na'to sa miyagi mga kuwan, meeting, ah, about sa marriage. Eh, case of nagisulti nga, a good marriage is between two good forgivers. No, ang maayaw nga kami niyon, makita nimo, taliwala sa duha. So husband and wife, kining duha nga, good forgivers, maayaw kayo mo, pasaylo si isa gi isa. Diba? Ang sakali ang magic words, no, magic words is, kining, I love you, I care for you, I'm so proud of you. Isa na siya kaside, ang sik- ang pika side is, I'm sorry, no forgive me, I was wrong. So kining pika side, I love you, I care for you, I'm so proud of you, monay sparkler, no, diha sa panimalay, spark ba, pareha na ko, diba nindot kayo, gaspar, spark. Nindot kayo siya, sparkler na sa panimalay. O kining isa, kining, I'm sorry, please forgive me, I was wrong, monay, ang fire extreme gisser. Niya kung dunay mo sila o, conflict, pag imo nga sorry, adi, palong dyan, diba? So kinahalagang sa panimalay, sa kami niyon, na ay sparkler and fire extreme gisser, na'to. O kanas siya mga about forgiveness, matulog nga'to sa ato ang mga anak, no? Diba nindot kayo, paminawan, sorry kayo, sorry kayo, ma sorry kayo pa, sorry kuya. Diba kanin dot kayo, monay essence sa panimalay nga makita ninyo nana. Pagkasubok kay panimala doon, nga dunay mga panimalay nga, nagdinokta na, amay isoon. Amay isoon pa gayon, so, perteng ano, perteng kasubok nga kamatuoran. Pero, ah, kita usab, atong himoon atong panimalay nga model ni Anna mga butanga. No, kanang forgiveness, gi-practice gayon o ayaw, ang pag say sorry, no, napractice gayon pag ayaw. Kay ginatawag na magic, it means dalirak kayo, isulti or abundancia, dili crisis nga mga butang, kung dili abundancia. Okay, you may remember that their faults, ah, you may remember their faults but because you are emotionally healed, you will bear no grudges against them. Monay, nindot, no nga, ah, maka remember mga kasa ilahang mga sayop, pero kay emotion na healed ka, no, makakita ka niya, di na magvokal imong dugo. Okay, kining mga tao nga kapasaylo, makita niya tong tao nga, nakasalahan niya, aga vokal yang dugo. Pero healed na siya, ah, wala na, kina deal naman, diba? Okay, so monay nindot kayo. Forgiveness. So it leads to emotional health, healthy ang atong emotion. Diba kanin dot kayo ng, matulog ka nga, pag i-remember nimo, tibok adlaw, wala kay tao nga, gikalantugi, wa kay tao nga gka-discuss, wala kay, wala kay conflict, kaitabo, tulog ka nindot kayo. No, kung dun na po'y mga adlaw nga halan, nag-away minik kuwan kay hina, nag-inulbagay mi, nag-ininsultuhay mi. Diba, lahin kay imong paminaw? Pero at that time, na mapang hitabo, ritsuleng ka ma kayo nga, sorry kayo, I was wrong. Madbitayin ka, di, pag abot ka na kuwan, pagkagabi iwa kayu naon naon, diba? O, ang biblia nag-ingon, no, sa inyong kasuko, ayaw pasalupi o adlaw. Idil dyan. Labinas managti ayon, no, nag-away. Pasalupag adlaw, wa panay pasaylo isa, sa ina hitabo, nagtalik danay, isa rin, isa na sa bed, natulog, pero, no, nag, ning balik sa, ning balik sa likod-likod. Diba, sa kasalay likod-likod, hahaha, nagbalik sa likod-likod, no, nagtulog ako, pero nagtalik danay. Kayo ngano man, wala madilga sa lupan o adlaw. Di mao't kayo, diba? Okay, so, hinaut nga, mga good forgivers kitang tanan, no, by the grace of God, tungod kay, mao kinisia ang, ah, nindot kayo, gamagpuyot tas kalino. Because we are, we must be good forgivers, because we are peace makers. Okay, diha sa tong family, sa atong marriage, sa atong family, sa atong silingan, tanan, no, tanan. May hana kita, so nindot kayo ang magiging atmosphere sa atong family, no, sa atong workplace. Tanan-tanan nga mga, mga tao nga atong makita, no, ma, ma, magiging, kuwan, ma-feel nila ang peace, gagikan nimo, kay peace maker mang ka, no, may, nakadungog na, nakadungog ka na, sa feedback si mga tao niyo nga. Ganang kay kuwan na niya ba kay, masimis storya lang, ma-bless kay ko. May mga feedback bitong may hana, so may ka na siya ba kay, may ka siya ma-advice. No, hinaut nga dagantang madungog nga sama ni Anna, no, for the grace, by the grace of God, for his glory and honor. Sige, mag-aampota. Salamat Lord, sa lesson among nalearn this morning. Salamat Ginoo, kay, ang among pamilya nga gi-establish Ginoo. Para kanimo Lord, akalang tanan, nagparticipate lamang kami. Busa ako gaampok karoon Lord, kami gaampok Ginoo, naghiusa sa mukasingkasing nga kung dun na may mga problema nga mag-abot sa among family, like mga conflict Ginoo. Kuya nagresulto mga bad emotions, unhealthy emotions Ginoo. Lord, una sa tanan, pasaylo ang kami Ginoo. Pasaylo ang kami. Oh, kung dun na Ginoo ay attitude Ginoo nga, gahi, muri lis o pasaylo, pos ba Ginoo ang among mga attitude. Hinaut nga gikan karoon, himoon nimo kami ang mga good forgivers Ginoo. Ngamahimo kami Ginoo, nga peace maker, sa mga taos ang palibot, unang-una Ginoo sa among family, Ginong Diyos. Amo pag-ampok ka na. He bless Lord, tanan ang mga anak, ngayon mga pamilya, ngang biyo na, ang among mga kaapuhan, nga asa sila karoon. Hinaut ngang imo ha Ginong paglihok, makaunay Ginong na sila ang kinabuhay. Oh, he bless Lord, ilang panimalay Ginoo, nga mahimo kayo Ginoo, nga panimalay, nga naga, mahimo Ginoo nga, ah, lighthouse Ginoo nga'to sa uban. nga ang imong glory Ginoo, naga-shine Ginong Diyos, diha silang mga panimalay tagsa-tagsa. Tabangi kami, he bless ang mga panginabuhay Ginoo nila, amo Lord, ang mga trabaho, mga business, mga farms, nga ma-enjoy Ginoo, sa family Ginoo, ang kabundansa Ginoo, sa labinas sa financial Ginoo. Okay, pre uso Lord, sa ginatawag na good health, sa tanan Ginoo, nga member sa family. Ah, o labas tanan Lord, ang kanunay nga hunger nga'to sa espirituhanong butang amahan. Sa pagpangita, kanunay, kanimo pagtawag kanimo. Kini mo pag-ampok Lord, he bless Lord, kami tanan, tanan Ginoo nga, anak nimo, inside this LGO family Ginong Diyos. Ikam magpapalayin si imong proteksyon, o kay imong provisioners madagaya. Speciali Ginoo karoon, among mga, imong mga anak Lord, mga legislators, nga mag-hibo silang session, hinaut imong kaalamlangit noon, maui magovern kanila Ginoo. Kini mo pag-ampok, amo pagpasalamat, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Maayong buntag sa tanan.
Session of the Sangguniyang Bayan of Ipeyul is now about to commence. May I request everyone to please rise for the entrance of the official maest of the Sangguniyang Bayan, the Presiding Officer, our very own Municipal Vice Mayor, the Honorable Ramses Troy Dioligario, and our Sangguniyang Secretary, Madam Esmeralda Igia.
Hello, ah, good morning to each and everyone. The 69th Regular Session is hereby called to order. To start with, I requesting everybody to please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem. Please be seated. Like to request our Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Okay, good morning to each and everyone, and welcome to the 69th Regular Session. Present for today's regular session, Mr. Chair, Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Troy Dioligario, Honorable Farida Dampalan, Honorable Catherine Turalba, Honorable Sarapien Ramos, Honorable Diane Catalunya, Honorable Juan Pablo Nueva, and Honorable Anapuyin Muhammad. On record there are seven Sir Weren Kurum.
Okay, considering that there are seven members present, the Chair would like to declare that there's a call. Um, Sir Floor Leader, for the adoption of the Order of Business.
Mr. Chair, at this juncture, may I move for the adoption of the Order of Business for today's regular session?
Today's motion for adoption of the Order of Business. Any second to that motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Diane Catalunya. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Having that the motion is hereby approved. May we proceed with the visitors' hour?
Mr. Chair, we are now on the visitors' hour. Before accommodating our visitor, may I move for the suspension of the rules?
Finish seconded motion for the suspension of the rules? A rule suspended to accommodate our visitors for this morning.
Mr. Chair, we have one visitor around, in the person of Ma'am Salilaw, our former MSWDO of this municipality. The, the purpose of coming here is for her to request for financial assistance for her grandson, Dave Matthew Lau Estrella, to join in the World International Mathematical Competition in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia, ah, on January of 2024.
Okay, Ma'am Salilaw nagyerno record.
Ma'am's son.
Morning Ma'am. And also acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Glenn Iyan Y Isabion. Good morning.
A pleasant morning to one and all. Ah, let me start by saying, thank you so much for this August Buddy, for allowing us, me and my children over there, to present our concern this morning. Ah, by the way, before I came here, I had talked with our municipal mayor last Monday, and she instructed me to come and join this session this morning. This is in relation to the letter of invitation we receive, oh, my grandson received, coming from the World International, ah, Olympiad, Mathematical Olympiad, informing him that he is one of the qualifiers to join the Philippine delegation in the World International Mathematical Competition scheduled on January 6 in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia. And this is the very reason why we are here this morning. Ah, by the way, my grandson is currently a Grade 12 scholar of the Philippine International, ah, no, of the Philippine Science High School, Zamwangga Region Campus, based in Depolad City. And he has been, for the past three years, he has been joining several national and international competitions. Actually, this is his, his third time to join a World Mathematical Competition, but the previous two years, it was ministered through, ah, online because of the pandemic. But this time, it is stated in the letter of invitation that there will be no, ah, online contest to be held, instead on-site. So, ah, all the participants to the world competition should be there in the venue on the said date. And that's the reason why I stand before you this morning.
Finished motion, Mr. Chair. Before the, Ma'am Salilaw will proceed, may I move to relinquish this chair to Honorable Menifredo Chong, who is already around. Thank you.
Okay, acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Susi Jane Garcia and the Honorable, ah, Menifredo Chong. Good morning. Okay, so what's the pleasure of the Buddy with regards to the intent of our visitor for this morning? Yes, Honorable Farida Dampalan? Okay, a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor or requesting to extend financial assistance on that matter? Okay. Okay, Ma'am, ah, the Honorable Dampalan, ah, has already stated her intent that the part of other matters, she will sponsor a resolution extending financial assistance to your grandson.
Okay. So with this, I'd like to, again, to thank all the members of this August Buddy for their support.
Okay, thank you Ma'am, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Ma'am. Okay, yes, yes. Next visitor, Mr. Floor, I think, ah, hersnan. May we proceed, Mr. Floor Leader, with the privilege hour?
Your non-privilege hour. There is anybody in this honorable chamber who wishes to avail of the privilege? Please raise your hand.
Okay, the Honorable Garcia raised her hand. Ah, considering that this is, this would be her last, ah, session, being the SK Federation chairperson of the municipality of Ipeyul. Spidina party?
Haha, wala.
May kaon si?
Wala, mabalik pa. Yeah, good morning, each and everyone. Ah, our Honorable Presiding Officer, good morning. Ah, my speech today is for my last, ah, session for this 11 or 12 council. To be, to be, ah, indeed, it is a goodbye, good as in G-O-O space by. Ah, today is the, today is the day that my term as Sangguniyang Kabataan Pambayam Federation President is in our municipality ends. In this, indeed, it is a very tough journey. Five years ago, I tried to running for the position as the Sangguniyang Kabataan Chairman in our barangay. I'm not certain at all, since nag-review ko that time, niulira ko that time, out of curiosity nga, SK lagay mo, dagan tapagka SK. So I, ah, niulira ko to file my certificate of candidacy. I did not experience campaigning, kay wala d'yo ko ni-try, o kana pitong nagbalay-balay sa among barangay, kay wala lagi ko sa Ipeyul. Ah, wala ko ihanaw kung, unsa d'yo ang SK that time. Ah, I did not even expect that I win for that position. But fortunate enough, I did and I won. Weeks passes by, as the SK Federation election fast approaching, out of nowhere, I was chosen to be a candidate of SK Federation President by our Honorable Mayor. It was very hard in my part since, wala d'yo ko sa Ipeyul nag-stay that time, pero miko absent. Na 'yung mga meetings called by our MLG O-O, wala d'yo ko din consider pidi d'yo siya ka-streak that time. And then, ah, despite of my absences, na akong mama, in my behalf, ako mama nag-appeal ha, considerin nga SK too, pero nga na akong mama na ah, tungod kay wala d'yo ko sa Ipeyul that time. And wala d'yo ko expect nga, from being an SK, musaka pa ko, ano nga time. And despite of it, sa akong pagiging SK, wala d'yo na ko geprioritize na siya, sa una-una pa lang, kasi kanang mas, geprioritize na ko kung pag-review that time. Review dayon, upcoming pa d'yo na kong board exam, ato nga time. I started very ignorant d'yo, ignorante kay ko, unsa ang SK that time. All I thought, SK is, sama sa una ang, sa SK, nara si kapitan, sugo una ni kapitan, ingon aanis si kapitan, so ikaw lang as SK, mulihok lang ka na. But out of nowhere, lahi sa SK during our batch. Fast forward, the night before the SK Federation election, ah, nigawas ang result sa CPA Board Exam na mo. Unfortunately, I failed. Ah, grabe, ang kasakit nga di ba't, I still feel it right now nga. Ato itong sakripisyo nga'y magipanghatag that time to achieve your goals, pero dili di ay, dili matag. And then, the following day, the election of the SK Federation, I won. So monato siya, kanang, ang kasakit og kalipain nga'y magipanghatag that time, dili d'yo basa-basta kay, gasagol d'yo to kay, wala ni mo geprioritize ang pagiging SK, pero d'to ka ni daog. Ang geprioritize sa'yo ang future, wala di hatag sa imuhang. That's why, ah, out of nowhere po, ni, nainipap nga message ako, ah, stating that your plans is better than my plans. So therefore, mauna siya ginahon di ay nga, I close the door for this certain para i-proteka and open this door for the best for you, for your future, diba? Ah, I'm still grateful nga despite of my failure sa akong pag-exam that time, na apoy another opportunity nga na-open. Ah, As I bid my farewell after my five years of wonderful journey, I will take this opportunity to thank the people whoheartedly and unconditionally support me throughout the years. To our honorable Municipal Mayor, thank you for choosing me and commending me to be this, to be in this prestigious position. It's such an honor and I'm forever grateful for the opportunity and privilege you have given to me. Sa pagplacer dako, dairy way back 2018. Likewise, to our Vice Governor Ray Andrew Oligario, Board Member Rick Oligario, and to our Vice Mayor Rambo Oligario for supporting me, for the guidance and motivation, nga dag, grabe dud ang motivation the time. Daghan kayong salamat, way puas ng pagpasalamat sa Oligario family. To my legislative family, honorable counselors, thank you so much for their great time and experience you have shared with me, guiding me, especially for those individual nga, and dyan dud kaay sila mutudlo sa'ko as they extend and share their knowledge and skills sa kuha in legislation. To Attila Lay, to our Counselor Farida Dampalan, to our Counselor Ipin Nueva, former Counselor Valen Ovario, former Counselor Ardi Catalunya, I've learned so much dud sa ilaha, as in they played a great role dud sa being, being the youngest legislator in our council. Ngamaingon dud ako nga, madalad dud ako as I continue to serve our community, our, to our constituents in our barangay. Thank you also to our secretaries, and my staff, and all the legislative staff sa mga friendship nga't ang gabi build together for five years. Salamat kay sa matag-usa. I'm lucky enough to be part of this 11th and 12th Legislative Council. To my Pambayam Pederasyon and Sanggungiyang Kabataan family, thank you so much for your unforgettable experience. We've shared together the fun times, the arguments, above all, the never-ending reconciliation after several disagreements. Thank you so much for the five years sharing together the leadership, for giving me the opportunity and privilege to serve with principle and dignity. I will be forever grateful for your support and companionship. To my epigenous youth, I may not give you everything you needed as you expected. I don't even been a perfect SK Federation president, but serving you been, has been an incredible journey filled with growth, collaboration, and cherished memories. It's such an honor and forever grateful for the opportunity to serve you. Daghan kayong salamat sa matag-usa, sa pagsalik sa'ko despite of my self-doubt, to the challenges along my journey, and to those who underestimate my capability. Salamat dud kayo, they already played a great role dud sa'ko kinabuy, kaya without criticism, without them, dili ko mustan as this ingonani karoon. So, naging part po na sila, dili dud ko mag-develop, dili ko mag-grow kung wala na sila. Finally, finally, I made it till the end. For five years, grabe dud ang mga, gipangkuan, lahi dud si SK before og karoon. Moto nga, ang mga, considering nga, we are the first batch of SK manggood, nga with full implementation of the Republic Act 742, or the Reform Act of 2015. Grabe dud, pati ang pag-transfer of funds separately, dili dud ingonani siya ka, kuwan, big responsibility dud being an SK. So, dili manato na, wala man ako nahatag tanan, but I know, I give justice to other youth nga, nang kailangan po sa'ko ang tabang. And then, this is not actually my goodbye. I hope and I prayed na to be, to be with you again next time around for the 13th Legislative Council. Unta makalingkod ko balik dari, uban sayo tabang. And once again, you're Sanggungiyang Kabataan Pambayam Pederasyon, 2018, 2013, ex-official SB member, your Youth and Sports Committee Chairman, your SK Chairman of Barangay Lower Ipil Heights is officially signing off today. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Honorable Susi Jane Garcia. May we invite you to the next regular session together with the Honorable Idamel O. Capiric, for the presentation of plaque of appreciation coming from this August body of the Municipality of Ipil. Again, thank you. Conso, hope to see you. Okay, next?
Honorable Chair, we're still on privilege hour. Is there anybody else who wishes to avail of privilege? Honorable Sabion?
Um, good morning, Mr. Flor. Muna satalan ako lang pasalamatan si Honorable Garcia sa service niyang kabataan unang treslongzon sa Ipil, o sa service niyang katauhan sa Ipil. And I hope na, I wish na, good luck sayang new journey, no? And hope to see you next time around. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Honorable Ramos? Any privilege? Honorable Nueva? Honorable Catalunya? Honorable Turalba?
Thank you, Mr. Flor, Mr. Chair. Likewise, with Honorable Ian Sabion, I would like to thank the Honorable Susi Jane Garcia for the five years, no, of untiring services for the youth, not only for the youth. Kabaluk ko sa iya habisan, mga dili na youth mo, atug dud sa'yo mga youth tabang. And congratulations for her new journey as member of the Sanggungiyang barangay in barangay lower Ipil Heights. Dili lalim mahimong Sanggungiyang Kabataan Chairperson because I was once an SK Chairperson also of barangay population of this municipality. So, we know, daghan ka'yo mga kanang circumstances nga iyang na-undergo. So, dili lalim, so, good luck and congratulations once again for being elected as Sanggungiyang, Sanggungiyang Member of the Sanggungiyang barangay or barangay lower Ipil Heights. See, naradud me sa Sanggungiyang bayan, anything nga imo kinhanglan when it comes to legislation, open ang Sanggungiyang bayan nga't matabangkanin niyo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Turalba.
Honorable Dampalan?
Yes. To Honorable Susi Garcia, you did a very well, you did a very good job for the five years of service as SK Chairman of Lower Ipil Heights and SK Federated Chair. We value what you did and very exemplary. Nakita na ko ang mga contributions nimo when it comes to the performance of our SKs in the 28 barangays. And of course, congratulations as a kagawad for Lower Ipil Heights. And that is all.
Okay, ma'am.
Honorable Chair, also some message for outgoing Honorable Garcia. Honorable Garcia, I wish to extend my heartfelt thanks in behalf of the Sanggungiyang Bayan, everybody here, for your services rendered within this period of five years. Although, it's not perfect, but at least you try your best. So with this, Honorable Chair, I wish to extend my congratulations to Honorable Garcia and good luck to your, to your new journey. At it be all, Honorable Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? I'll reserve my speech for the Honorable Garcia on the next regular session. Okay, Mr. Flor leader? For the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there's a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Any second to that motion. Julis seconded by Honorable Muhammad. Discussion, any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. For the approval, Mr. Flor leader?
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval.
Okay, there's a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Julis seconded by Honorable Sabion. Discussion, any amendments, any correction? Objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the Reference of Business.
Okay, for the Reference of Business calendar and first reading, under the, under other communications, we have here the supplemental budget number one for CY 2023 of barangay Betrans Village.
It's the pleasure of the body. Mr. Flor leader, may we?
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
You refer this matter to Committee on Appropriation?
Item B, communication from Police Inspector Percival Alar, acting Municipal Fire Marshal, pertains to the 1,000 square meters lot donated by LGO to the BFP to be used as site for APL Municipal Fire Station. Informing that the said subdivision survey application, which was submitted at Land Management Services Dean of Region Nine, was disapproved due to the existing approved subdivision plan under PSD 09-034784, requesting for the cancellation of the previously approved subdivision plan under PSD 09-034784 through SB Resolution.
Okay, Mr. Flor leader?
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Land Use.
You refer this matter to Committee on Land Use.
Item C, Julie endorsed from the mayor, the letter from Puruk Airways Sanito Homeowners Association, requesting for resolution, requesting the Office of His Excellency Fernando Ramaldes Marcos Jr. for the issuance of proclamation in favor to the Puruk Airways Homeowners Association for the purpose of conferring rights of the constituents over the parcel of land currently occupied, which portion of lot number 732-A, the CSD 12962.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Land Use.
You refer this matter to Committee on Land Use.
Item D, Julie endorsed from the mayor, the Local Council for the Protection of Children Plan for CY 2024, requesting for approval through SB Resolution.
What's the pleasure of the body? For the local council for the protection of children plan for CY 2024, what's the pleasure of the body?
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
I move that this matter be referred to the...
Committee on Family and Women? Family and Women, Children? Naman na committee na?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For consideration, before, we will refer that matter to a particular committee, may I move for a five minutes recess?
A recess for five minutes? Back to order.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Family, Women, and Children and Committee on Appropriation.
Isa lang, isa lang. Isa lang kaya kuwan, og sa apromo, agi ramayapunin for the review of our annual budget 2024. So, may we refer this matter to Committee on Family, Women, and Children?
Item E, we have your invitation from the LLBO 9 in coordination with DBM for the General Assembly and Budget Forum on December 6th to 7th at Grand Astoria Hotel, Sambuanga City.
Okay, for your information?
Item F, Audit Report from KWA for the year ended December 31, 2020, 21, 22, of barangay Sanito, upper pangit ayon tumitum poblasyon bakalan Don Andres, Lower Kaway, Maasin, and Makilas.
For your, for your, for your information?
Where now the committee reports, sir?
Mr. Flor, for the committee reports?
We are not on committee report. Is there anybody among, among the members of this honorable chamber who has the committee report? This raise your hand.
Mr. Flor? I have one honorable committee report, but maybe I can present it next regular session na emergency, magod gabian kuwan, so maybe I can present it in next regular session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Ramos, committee report? Honorable Nueva? Honorable Apid, committee report? Honorable Catalunya? Honorable Dampalan, any committee report? Honorable Turalba?
I have committee report. Committee Report Number 216 on the Committee on Appropriation. The subject is Sanggungiyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 01-2023 of barangay Magdaup, amounting to 145,294 pesos and 66 centavos, and barangay demandan 369,238 pesos and 40 centavos. The Committee on Appropriation, to which was referred the Sanggungiyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 01-2023 of two barangays, Magdaup and Domandan of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. The said barangay supplemental budget number 01-2023 has been referred to the local finance committee through the Municipal Budget Officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under Section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in Section 3 of 5 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing in the execution of budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting Accounting, and Auditings Rules and Regulations. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 216 of the Committee on Appropriation.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the committee report?
Second, Honorable Chair.
Julis seconded, the motion is hereby carried.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the Sanggungiyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 01-2023 of barangay Magdaup amounting to 145,294 pesos and 66 centavos, and barangay domandan amounting to 369,238 pesos and 40 centavos, and moving the same, the supplemental budget to be in full force and effect.
Second, Honorable Chair. Okay, Julis seconded, any discussion? Yes, the Honorable Garcia?
Con, very lang, unsa siya date. Considering nga nag-election na dapat on hold ng among mga fan sa SK.
I will ask the staff of the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation ang katung ilahang sulod sa attachments, ani.
As you kon, thank you. That supposedly stop na among pagpagawas magd sa among fan. That's why I wonder nga, nung napay supplemental, karoon. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh... What would be the pleasure of this, of this council?
Yes.
Uh, okong...
So what's the pleasure of the, uh, General Sosy Jane Garcia? Uh, since her query was so...
To hold this, uh, committee report in, in, uh, in abeyance Because, uh, this humble representation had already moved for its, its approval. So if the members of the Sangunyang Bayan Uh, is amenable that we will hold in abeyance?
Okay, I'd like to ask General Garcia if, uh, You, she'll be moving for a resolution, uh, laying this on the table?
Uh, let me proceed, Mr. Chair, Before that, uh, uh, action of the Honorable Garcia. We have still another supplemental budget of the Sangunyang Kapataan Of barangay Apur Pangit and barangay Lourtehway.
So what's the pleasure of the body? Uh, especially General Garcia.
Oo, can we hold it, Mr. Chair? Since, uh, huma na magod among election, wala na dudapat budget. Supposedly ang budget namu is for the next year na preparation and not supplemental.
Okay, can you...
I assume move...
Yeah, sige, uh, there's a... Uh, General Ramos raised his hand. Yes, General Ramos.
Okay, I would like to request to ask The Appropriation Committee Chairman, kung sa purpose, the supplemental budget. Kung pernelitan karoon, it was approved. Adunan yang proposal, approved prior to the Aning kandak o be election, moga gres periodan. Therefore...
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's why I ask, kung unsa siya date ang supplemental, Baka prior siya sa election, late lang ang committee report.
Yes, considering also that the committee chair on appropriation is not around, So maybe delay matubag ni General Turalba ang mga query. So that's the very intent of General Garcia that Uh, we will hold this in abeyance para ato sa iklaroan tanan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Uh, may I move for a five minutes recess? We will request the staff of the honorable caperik to bring all those documents para makita.
Okay.
Kaya basina late lang yun ang committee report.
Okay, so recess for five minutes.
Please session be back to order. Okay, uh, the honorable Garcia.
Uh, I would like to move for a motion, Mr. Chair, to hold in abeyance the committee report of appropriation. One two seven, one two.
One two six and.
One two six and one two seven.
Okay, there's.
For further scrutiny and verification.
Okay, there's a motion presented by the honorable Garcia to hold in abeyance the committee report number.
On appropriation.
Uh, committee on appropriation number one two six and one two seven for further, uh, study. Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by the honorable Chong. Discussion? Any, yes, uh, the honorable Ramos.
Mr. Chair, may I request to use the microphone, Mr. Chair?
Kelly make use of the microphone.
I will request the acting chairman of the committee on appropriation to suit us. Kada bang order of karan sa proposal sa hindi preparation of the supplemental budget. Kaya ako nagsabahan before the request for the approval of the supplemental budget. Do na sila morang, morang project proposal. Project proposal. Mutsi propose. Si for example, one hundred thousand for the kining propose, uh, supplemental budget. Muna kalusanan na himo request. Kaya may gumanta sa election bank. Kung di himo ona with L M election bank na port five days. So it should be prepared prior to the election bank. Muna kini karon approval diba committee? Udo it's late. Naulahe. Pero kung ang mauna request prior to the election bank. Muna nga to is to John kung bilibata ma kuha kay.
Mr. Chair.
In case, in case biya. Maka kasukaso kita podreng approve apil biya penta sa kasukaso kung in case na dunay muri pramo. Prenakaron question satong iske.
Sir Ma. Yes, um, uh, yes, honor Ramos, I would like to interrupt since the honorable Garcia raises her concern nga kabayan sa SK but we found out nga dideto siya SK budget but barangay supplemental budget. So there was a clerical error on the part of the.
Bisa pag barangay.
Yes, yes.
Barangay budget kay part na biya po nagduangan biya election barangay whiskey.
Yes. Okay, may we ask the, uh, proponent?
Mr. Chair, uh, the committee on appropriation is already amenable with the clerical, uh, clerical error but, uh, it's not only a clerical but it's substantial because we already rendered that committee report. Uh, the, uh, motion of the honorable Susi Jane Garcia for the deferment and of the said, uh, co- a committee report was already seconded, Mr. Chair. So with the concern of the honorable Ramos, uh, Mr. Chair, let that matter be discussed before the committee and I think the honorable Ramos is also one of the member on, of the committee on appropriation.
Okay. So any further discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval. Anwar, committee report.
Mr. Chair, committee report number.
Uh, no, 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 uh, one two eight. One two eight seven.
One two seven.
One two eight. One two eight nine.
Mr. Chair, committee report number one two eight of the committee on rules, ordinances and resolutions. The subject is the, uh, MOA endorsed to the Sangguniyang Bayan. A MOA to be entered into by the Department of Science and Technology Regional Office nine and the local government unit of EPL for the implementation of the community empowerment through science and technology for the municipality, municipality of EPL, Zamboanga Cebu港. The SEST EPL for the appropriate, uh, review. Mr. Chair, the remarks and recommendations, the committee on rules, ordinances and resolutions to which was referred the said ma matter find it upon, upon review. Find it, uh, uh, meritorious and valid to allow the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the law, uh, Department of Science and Technology and the local government unit of EPL. Therefore, Mr. Chair, the committee, uh, recommends for the approval of the said, uh, MOA. I move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair of the committee on rules, ordinances and resolutions.
It is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Julie seconded by the honorable Naga. The motion is here by Gary.
And another resolution, Mr. Chair, a, a, a resolution approving the content of the MOA to be entered into by the Department of, of Science and Technology Regional Office nine with the local government unit of EPL.
Okay, seconded motion. Julie seconded by the honorable Naga. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, resolution authorizing the local chief executive, the honorable Anna Melce Oligario to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of, of Science and Technology Regional, uh, Office nine and to sign for and behalf of the local government unit. I so move and submit, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion for the approval. Julie seconded by the honorable Naga. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing the motion is here by. Any more?
That would, that would be all, Mr. floor, Mr. Chair, thank you.
We're still committee report, honorable Dangpalan. Any committee report?
Councilor, committee report, sir.
Back to Madam Secretary.
For the business for the day.
Okay, for the business on second reading, we still have the proposed executive budget for CY twenty twenty four of the general fund of the municipal EPL. This is the continuation of the discussion.
Okay, what's the pressure of the body?
Uh, considering that, uh, considering that the LCPC plan is still a refer to the committee of the honorable Dangpalan. May I move, Mr. Chair, to defer the discussion on that matter?
Next motion to, to defer the discussion of this matter again to we continue to discuss this, uh, proposed executive budget for second reading on the next regularization. Seconded by the honorable Diane Catalunya. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval. Madam Secretary.
For the third and final reading, we have the ordinance creating the position of one utility four month salary grade six. Step one under the middle and appropriating funds thereof.
Okay, so an ordinance creating for the position of one utility four month salary grade six under the middle and appropriating funds thereof. So who's in favor of this ordinance? Kelly raise your right hand and say aye. Okay, all are in favor? So the yes votes have it. This ordinance is here by proof for third and final reading.
Other matters?
Okay, other matters, the honorable, uh, Dampalan.
Honorable Chair, may I move for the suspension of the rules?
Los suspended.
May I move for a resolution, uh, ex. A resolution requesting the honorable mayor, Anna Melce Oligario to extend assistance to, um, Dave Matthew Lau Estrella who is to join in the world international mathemat- mathematical competition in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia on January twenty twenty four.
Okay, there's a motion. Presented by the honorable Dampalan, Julie seconded by the honorable Sabion. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Ah, yes.
For consideration.
Yes, the honorable Ramos.
Amo tanalang kong, kung pila ba allocated budget under the office of the mayor. Kung in case na dunay muriquest for assistance, tabel, mo sapa dia.
Mr. Chair.
Gikanasa, yes. The honorable Trelba.
The query of the honorable Ramos is beyond the level of the Sangguniyang Bayan.
Okay.
So it's, it's in the office of the municipal mayor and it's the mayor's discretion
Yes.
to release that fund.
So in that case, our budget for the office of the municipal mayor morang ma consider as a lamsam preparation. So it depends on the mayor and how to spend the money.
Okay, yes. Na may budget account o' code atong mayor ng mga donations. Uh, so sinalay bala, no? Uh, ga.
Morag, morag daghan magin request of assistance. Naimo, naimo tabel.
Yes, the honorable Trelba.
Our role is up to, uh, is only up to legislation. We do not know kaning ato ang ginapasa ng resolution o ma grant materyal ni mayor. At least nakapasa talitukay. Namang po instances nga wala po'y mahatag si mayor.
Yes, yes.
But then we tried our best, no? nga morgyo ng atong mahatag po nga para ma official po ng release po sa LGO.
Okay.
Para sa assistance.
Yeah. Okay, Anwar? Discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by. Anwar? Oh, yeah, um, initial information considering that, uh, uh, we haven't received a formal invitation yet. So as per conversation with our very own provincial director of the D I L G, engineer Mario Batepna, that we're going to have a Cebug awards night on January twenty nine, twenty twenty three, so.
Twenty four?
Uh, November twenty nine, twenty twenty three, rather, uh, November twenty nine, twenty twenty three. So initial information, initial, uh, venue wala pa man naisgutan but, um, initial information, nina, invited, uh, no, to receive the award for, uh, the utmost outstanding Sangguniyang Bayan for the province of Zamboanga Cebu港. So there will be a cash prize. We're going to receive, uh, fifty thousand for that. Uh, as being announced by the provincial director, bigger plaque po daw kesa region nga ato madawan.
Kuyog ko.
Kuyog, tan, tanan.
Kuyog ko.
So manasay, uh, initial information, ato ang nakalap. Okay, we will just wait for the official communication.
Siguro lang dyan nga, tanan.
Yes, uh, manan.
Kuyog ko.
Kuyog? Kuyog, tan, tanan.
Wala na ko.
Okay, Anwar? Announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before malimtan, kaning atong Christmas decor, atong concern natin lalay.
Okay, so once I update ato.
Asa matamuhag ba na to. Mama siguro ni June, ang imo na koyang June. Recess, Mr. Chair.
Okay, recess.